Have the roll call, please.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Perthert.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Snively.
Here. If you'd like to join us, we're going to do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any corrections or changes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We'll move to public participation and we'll begin with our friend, Kim Daggy, who will talk to us about Enjoy Oxford. Hi, Kim.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me, Kim Daggy and Joy Oxford, and to council and everyone here attending tonight.
It's ready. Just come by when you're ready for it.
Okay. So obviously, year in review for 2023. We started the year off looking at the comprehensive plan Oxford tomorrow, plus some suggestions from city council, and tried to incorporate that as we began 2023. As you can see in the speech bubble, one thing is year-round attractions promoting Oxford year-round, not just in the shoulder seasons, which we traditionally had done. One example are the winter and summer signs, but we also added an autumn and the new spring sign that's out at the park now. And thanks to Casey and Julia for installing them for us because they're four by six and I'm five feet tall, so they're quite a challenge to install. So I appreciate his partnership with that. Another thing we did in 2023 was launch a new website in September. This was based on the capstone class that we had a year ago and had that built. We loved it so much and it incorporated video. Some other things, we did some interviews with our hotel community and restarted the ambassador program. So we took them around, their frontline staff, around some of our attractions in Oxford as a visitor to take them around and give them that experience as well, which they appreciated. Also, we, one big thing I'm really proud of is we did increase our spend for advertising and promotion an additional 10%. So based on our lodging tax, we went from 20% to 30% and this year we're incorporating up to 40% of our budget. So I'm really excited about that. You can see some of our signature events that we do and also those that we have in partnership. Also, we believe in authentic photography and we invest in this with the city as well. But we like to show our city and our people and our visitors. For our website, you can see just then, those of you who are technical analysts that like the data, with the new website compared to 2022, we did have a 33% increase in sessions as well as session time and also users. On this page, we have a request for information, which is our printed welcome guide. So we ended up mailing directly from our site 203 packets, which went to eight countries and 35 states. So that's all authentic requests for information about Oxford, Ohio. And in our top 10 pages that are visited, obviously our homepage and calendar are usually one and two, and then E is usually at the top of the list, and I'm proud to see that our events are showing up in that top 10 as well. Other insights, we did come up to full-time staffing last year. So we had a dedicated communications and marketing manager. Claire did an amazing job managing our platforms here and also introduced a new platform called Sherpa, which vets influencers for CVBs like us, and then we can put out an RFP for content that we want to create it. And it's also shared on that platform and it did exceptionally well. So we're continuing with that partnership as well. Newsletters are a direct communication that we do with our business community as well as our subscribed community of visitors and residents. We won an award at the Ohio Travel Association, a Ruby Award, for this redesigned newsletter. So that was exciting. We are gaining new subscribers as we speak. Also, our open rate is above industry and average, and we've grown another percentage rate, which is pretty great when the industry average is only 1%, and ours is up to 7%. And then, of course, we know we're the best college town in Ohio, but we did put out an ad for this publication with it when we won the award. So that was pretty great. And why is tourism important? These are statistics based on Tourism Ohio, which is our state tourism office. This is data, the most recent they have of 22 economic impact data. Visitor spending in Ohio accounted for 13, increased 13%. Overnight visits increased 10% and visits to Ohio increased 6% based over 2021. And what this equates to is an overnight visitor is equal to about $382 per person per overnight stay. And when I look back on the year, the things that I felt most proud of and thought we did well, and I will remember 2023, was the industry support we did for the hotels with the listening sessions, restarting, taking hotel staff around and showing them town as a visitor. We also gave them welcome banners to put when we have big impact weekends or leaving them up all year round, huge banners welcoming our guests to Oxford. We also restarted our Ambassador Saturdays out at the farmer's market. We did some new swag with t-shirts. We did two rounds of sweatshirts and hoodies that were interactive and picking the design with the public as well as the colors. We also have some sustainable mugs if anyone wants to pick one of those up. We did some new promotion, as we said, with the new increase in spend. So we did some tri-state trail promotions, also with Ohio Magazine and four different publications in Edible Ohio for our farmer's market. We attended and applied to go to Ohio Tourism Day at the courthouse on May 6, and that was a blast. And then we've also signed a placemaking memorandum of understanding with the city for more big events that are coming this year. For publics, that includes some public art. And one thing Claire did that we've received a lot of compliments back is this weekend in Oxford publications on social media. And of course, you're all invited to the events that are coming up and some things to look forward to in '24. We want to try and incorporate putting our printed publications out in other tourism information centers up further into Ohio and Michigan, continue with influencer content. Like I said, we're adding another 10% spend for advertising promotion about Oxford. We also have Moncito installed on our website, which is for accessibility to improve our website experience. Our new events that you can see listed there, and we're also researching some new ones for 2024. And just some more authentic photography for you to enjoy if you had any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Kim? Great job. You do a wonderful job for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will turn to public comments and anybody wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda, or if they are just on the consent agenda, this would be the time to comment on those things. And we'll give you five minutes. Just give us your name and where you live, and we are glad to hear your air.
Steve Chaffin, 6022 Fairfield. First, I want to thank you for your having a discussion about the proposed rule change. And I have to say that I didn't intend to insult anyone on council or be critical of people on council. It was just, my idea was to try to increase dialogue between the public and our government. Trust in government is kind of low right now, as you know, and I think it's important that we strive to increase the trust in government by allowing as much dialogue as possible, even if it's inconvenient or uncomfortable at times. I still think it's important. But I'm here tonight to discuss another issue, which is the fiery MS issue.
That's on the agenda if you'd like to.
You want me to wait until then, mayor?
You can go ahead. You're up here.
Okay, thank you. I've been doing research on this issue for several months now. I've been gathering the data, talking with members of the staff, council, and the public. In an article from the November 2023 Miami Student Assistant Manager Green is quoted as saying, quote, "It would be irresponsible to start talking about solutions before we really understand," excuse me, "the full nature of the problem." I agree with her, and from what I can gather, we still don't understand the full nature of the problem. From my research, I've concluded that one of the issues facing the city is a lack of adequate staffing, which has been a result of, I would characterize as inadequate recruitment and retention of new staff. For at least the last two years, there have been 45 individuals who have applied for positions with the fire department. We currently have 32 part-time firefighters. The question could be asked, why are none of these people hired or brought up to full time or hired and then left? To understand, there might be another staff person leaving. We need to understand why we cannot successfully recruit and train and retain the staff and try to develop a plan of action to correct this. I don't think it's going to be the best policy for the city just to put a bunch of money and say, okay, now we're going to attract great staff if we don't fix that problem. Let's allow some time to see if we can successfully recruit and retain the positions we have funded for this year. The other unknown is the university and its commitment or lack thereof. I have attempted to speak with them about the issue. They refuse to meet with us. The negotiations between the city and the university have been off the record. There's no minutes and no notes taken at these meetings. This ambiguity about the university's commitment is a good reason to delay any decision and to wait until we are sure that they're taking this issue as seriously as it is. I've spoken to the trustees at the meeting. I'll do so in the future. I'll work with council and others to get a firm commitment from the university before we proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it. Anyone else like to address council tonight? Okay. Thank you all for coming. And as your item comes up, if you're interested in it, we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that time as well. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved and we'll move to resolutions. And you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the street closures for the Oxford Chamber of Commerce for the 2024 Annual Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
Good evening.
By the way, this is for those following along. I know that the page numbers aren't at the top of the agenda, so periodically when I think of it, I'll tell you what page things are on. And this starts actually on page 74. Okay.
I think this one's 82.
Well, that's when it really gets into it.
Good evening. This is the Chamber of Commerce's request to expand their Oxford Craft Beer and Wine Festival to include a closure of High Street as well as Main Street East and West Park Place. So it's a growth of their event. And we, as staff, if you guys remember, we met a few months ago about how to handle these requests, and we decided that staff can't waive fees, council does. And so we want to share with you that staff have met and talked about this event. We agree that it's a large event and that closing High Street may be warranted. However, we do need to express that we have some concerns about waiver of fees. The reason would be, if we waive fees for this event, what, how do we equitably decide who gets to have waived fees and who doesn't? And that's something we are really struggling with. And so I guess our recommendation would be like, we're okay with the road closure, but we would continue with fees. And we wanted to share that with you tonight. But the chamber is here, and I, if you're welcome, if you're okay if they could speak.
Sure.
First, let me say thank you for allowing us to come and speak on this. I'm Kelly Riggs, president of the Oxford Chamber, and then I have our treasurer here, Carol Havens. The Oxford has really enjoyed, Oxford Chamber's really enjoyed creating a relationship with the city and supporting local businesses and local community. We have recently, over the last couple of years, created a lot of placemaking through community events that is crucial for a growing piece of the success of Oxford's economy and culture. Our partnership with Oxtoper Fest with the City of Oxford, which I know the mayor absolutely loves us doing, the event is an example of organizations working together to benefit the community and celebrate our city. We are an active part of the community that advocates for our businesses. And we are also a business here in Oxford, being a nonprofit. And, you know, a few years ago, back during COVID, we saw an impact on the chamber as well as businesses, other businesses in our community had an impact. Not being able to host the wine festival and with the proceeds of that, you know, we give out four scholarships to Talawanda students, but that's also proceeds that the chamber runs off of besides our membership dues, which also made us create sustaining memberships, which that has helped offset a little bit of that. But in return for that, the Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival is a cornerstone event for the Oxford and that many citizens and visitors look forward to each year. I mean, we have many people come up, especially the year we weren't able to have it, you know, how much they missed it and how they enjoyed it being in October when we had to have it in October the following year, which also became then Oxtoper Fest. So now we have two festivals, one being partnered with the City of Oxford. So we are asking and requesting that the closure of the public right-of-way matching the event zone for Oxtoper Fest to add the sense of place and public safety for our event and allow us to grow. We also believe the addition to High Street will help not only just grow, but greater heights of success for the future and possibly bring more vendors and people into Oxford. Right now, we probably have, I'm going to guess, 3,500 on the small side that actually come in every year for the festival. The festival is a totally free event if you're not drinking. You don't have to pay to come and enjoy the music, to go around and purchase food, to go around and do the vendors. You only have to pay if you choose to drink wine or beer. So that's the part the chamber makes part of their proceeds off of, again, that runs the chamber. So not only are we asking for closing the High Street, that's another reason we're asking to also waive the fee of the meters for closing the entire thing, because that's also a way for us to have a partnership with the city. And in return, we would like the city to be a sustaining sponsor of the Oxford Chamber of Commerce. We're kind of behind the game, we know, in having sustaining sponsorships. Last year was our first year and many chambers have already had that, and most of their city is a sustaining sponsor. So we're not asking really the city to donate more money to the chamber. We're asking for all those fees to be waived in lieu of a sponsorship with the Oxford Chamber of Commerce, which means your logo and a direct link to your city, City of Oxford, would be put on our website as well. So we would ask for that, but we're not asking for the fees to be waived for like our police. We value the police. We value the City of Oxford and staff that come up and shut those street closures down and put up the no parking signs. We know we have to pay for that, and we would never try to take that away from those departments. We want to do that for them because we appreciate and value what they do for us. But we would like the city to waive the meters and all the right-of-way permits for everything. So thank you in consideration, and we appreciate any type of support that you would be able to help us with during this event.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Sure.
Yeah. So my name's Carol Havens, and I'm a board member for the Oxford Chamber of Commerce. I've been for a long time. And I just want to emphasize that we're an active partner with our Oxford businesses. This is one event, but we are on a daily basis trying to support the businesses and bring people into town and give them the opportunity to showcase their businesses. So we love the partnership with the City of Oxford, but are, we are daily contributors to try to help the businesses in Oxford. And I think by being able to do this and being able to offer this and being able to drive people into Oxford is going to be very, very helpful for us for this event and then bringing the people back for maybe other events in the future. So we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you very much.
This is our 17th year, too.
There's that. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution?
Anne Furth. I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I appreciate, Jessica, your mentioning the notion of equity. And I wasn't planning to say anything, but I'm remembering the conversation when the Masons held their car show. And so I'm interested in what criteria you would use to determine what would be an equitable waiving of fees for parking. Just some clarification on that point. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this? Okay. And when I ask, raise your hand if you're slow getting up, because then I'll wait for you. All right. Counselors, questions, comments?
That's a couple of questions. One is a technical question. It just talks about waiving fees, but there's a variety of fees that are associated with. There's the street closure fee, there's the parking meter rate, there's the personnel cost. So when we're talking about the waiver, it sounds like it's a waiver of some of these costs, but not, so which ones are technically fees? And it sounds like the police personnel cost is separate, not being waived?
Correct.
So we're waiving the closure fees, we're waiving the parking rates. That's just, I'm just trying to understand, when the resolution says the waiver of the fees, what exactly is and isn't being waived?
We wrote it as a waiver of all fees, but hearing from the chamber, a waiver of parking fees would be $1,320.
Okay.
And then the rest would be direct personnel fees and road closure fees.
Okay.
Do we have an estimate on those costs?
$1,320.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on page 91.
So their invoice is in the packet. It is $300 for road closures, $1,320 for parking, for service personnel, $480, for police personnel, $960, and for additional trash and recycling is $150.
So what they're requesting is the fees for the parking meters and the street closure?
I do believe they have clarified that their request is for the parking, which is $1,320.
Okay.
Oh, and road closures?
Yeah.
Which would be an additional 300, so $1,620.
All right, thank you. Can we, can we make that somehow clear in the resolution? Because it's not clear in the resolution itself.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess I would make a motion that we could insert the language on the resolution, section one, the fees for road closure and parking, parking meter costs as an insertion. So we'd read that, waiving the fees for street closure and parking meter costs for the street. Yeah.
Is it in the best interest of the community?
I guess it already says street closure, so it just could, it probably could just insert the language, street closures and parking, you know.
Yeah, we could do that at the top, and then you wouldn't need to do it below.
So that's my motion.
Got that, Heather. So Dave's made a motion. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment to specify and parking meter costs?
I think I do have a question. Was the intention to have that on this resolution and it just, or is this now simply because, I don't mean to say simply like I'm trivializing it, but...
Our apologies. I don't think we understood the scale and scope of what the chamber was requesting with waiver of fees. Like, was it all or some? And so with their clarification tonight, it just helped narrow the scope.
Okay.
If I could just share a few things. We had a spirited discussion at staff meeting on this. It, you know, as Ann brought up, the Masons had come in and requested some waivers, and we basically said no. And, you know, if you look at, let's say, the Enjoy Oxford, their summer music festival, it's a lot different event. It's not as big. We don't, it's not, it doesn't involve as much, many staff. And so many of us felt like we didn't need to waive the fees. I mean, this is a big event for the chamber. I've been involved in it probably just about every year, except maybe the last two. And, you know, they do a wonderful job. It's a great event and do provide scholarships, but they also bring in a lot of money. And, you know, I guess my concern is that if we don't cover our costs, then we shift it over to the taxpayers. And then, as Ann brought up, you know, how we differentiate. You know, if there's no cost, I can envision just about every organization coming up wanting to do, to do an event to see if it works. And now, maybe that's an exaggeration, but we just need to understand what we're getting ourselves into.
I want to limit conversation just to the amendment.
Oh, pardon me.
We vote on this amendment.
I apologize.
That's okay. So is there any further discussion on the amendment which specifies and parking meter costs? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Passes. Now, your comment applies to the overall motion.
Well, ditto. Just, I don't want to have to repeat it.
That's okay. You don't have to repeat it, but I, I think that Ann's comment was exactly the thought that I had, which is how do we make this decision? And be fair. I mean, we've always been fair in the past because we haven't waived it for anybody except the music festival, which is really our event, too. And I guess that's the question is, what are the criteria that we want to use to be able to say yes or no? Because if we set a precedent here... Okay, any discussion on the amendment to specify and parking meter costs?
I think I do have a question. Was the intention to have that on this resolution and it just... Or is this now simply because, I don't mean to say simply like I'm trivializing it, but...
Our apologies, I don't think we understood the scale and scope of what the Chamber was requesting with waiver of fees. Like, was it all or some, and so with their clarification tonight, it just helped narrow the, the scope.
Okay.
If I could just share a few things, we had a spirited discussion at staff meeting on this. It, you know, as Anne brought up, the Masons had come in and requested some waivers, and, and we basically said no. And, you know, if you look at, let's say, the Enjoy Oxford, their summer music festival, it's a lot different event. It's not as big, we don't, it's not, it doesn't involve as much, many staff. And so, many of us felt like we didn't need to waive the fees. I mean, this is a big event for the Chamber, I've been involved in it probably just about every year, except maybe the last two. And, you know, they do a wonderful job, it's a great event, and do provide scholarships, but they also bring in a lot of money. And, you know, I guess my concern is that if we don't cover our costs, then we shift it over to the taxpayers. And, and then, as Anne brought up, you know, how we differentiate. You know, if there's no cost, I can envision just about every organization coming up wanting to do, to do an event to see if it works. And, now, maybe that's an exaggeration, but we just need to, to understand what we're getting ourselves into.
Okay. I wanna limit conversation just to the amendment.
Oh, pardon me.
We vote on this amendment.
I apologize.
That's okay. So, is there any further discussion on the amendment which specifies and parking meter costs? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Passes. Now, your comment applies to the overall motion.
Well, ditto, just, I don't wanna have to repeat it.
That's okay, you don't have to repeat it, but I, I think that Anne's comment was exactly the thought that I had, which is, how do we make this decision? And be fair. I mean, we've always been fair in the past, because we haven't waived it for anybody, except the Music Festival, which is really our event too. And I guess that's the question, is what are the criteria that we wanna use to be able to say yes or no? Because if we set a precedent here, then any group, I guess if they're asking to close or use any of the parking areas, our, our answer might be no, because we don't wanna waive the fees. So, we should think about that carefully.
I mean, I would ask, I would reframe that as a question, is could we not develop a policy that would enable us to... I mean, right now, the policy is, the answer is, we're consistent by saying no. You know, but I, I can imagine we could have a, a set of criteria for the kind of events for which we are willing to do this. And, and I understand the instinct to use this as to just kind of like tamp down on the asks. But I think we miss opportunities, because, I mean, I, I view this like, yeah, we lose on parking meter costs. I'm super happy that they're, they're committed to the, the police, that, you know, there are costs to clearing the street and all that stuff.
And I think all of those should always be...
And, and, yeah, because those costs aren't going away, but like, could we forego some parking meter rates for other benefits, like having thousands of visitors in our Uptown District? Like, you can imagine it's like a lost leader, it's an investment. And so, I would prefer, if our answer were just like, to be fair, we say no to everybody, I'd like to think it's possible to develop a policy. We don't have one tonight, you know, unfortunately. I, I think, you know, that could say, well, then the answer should just be no until we have a policy. But I think that, I'm not sure, yeah, I think that...
I think if you pass this, then you're gonna have to say yes to everything.
I, you know, I don't, I don't think it sets a legal precedent. I mean, I would've waived it for the, for the, for the Masons.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna pass it for them, then I wanna pass it also for the Sonic Law.
But I, you know, but I think that, you know, I think that saying yes to this might jumpstart us into developing the policy. I mean, we had that same issue with the Masons, we didn't develop a policy, and now we're, you know, six months later. And I, I think that to, to protect meters that in the summertime are likely sitting, many of them are sitting vacant, and making them pay for a vacant meter. I mean, I'm hoping that an event like this could grow to such an extent that then, you know, that there'll be enough cost that, for example, they could pay the meter cost. I mean, I think an event at that scale, if it grew, revenue could come back to the city. I, I just would rather take a gamble on, on seeing this event grow and on the hope that we can develop a policy to do this equitably, rather than just knee-jerk no.
Sure, thank you.
I was gonna say, I think we set a precedent if we don't say the criteria that we used tonight. And I don't think it's a legal precedent, but it's a fair and equitable one to follow. So, if we say, if we want to support this, I don't know if we do, but if we do and we lay out why, that should go forward, right? Or at least temporarily towards that goal while we ask staff to come up with a criteria that we might agree to, right? But I don't think we have to say just yes to everything or just no tonight, but we have to at least explain why this is different.
Yeah.
If it is.
And that's what I'm thinking, is what, what makes this different? I mean, they articulated very well the importance of the, the Chamber's work with the city and the Beer and Craft Wine Festival. But I think we have to figure out what the policy would be. I mean, I remember that spirited discussion. And we wanna grow as a city, and we'd like to have more festivals come here. This one is well-established, seventeen years is a long time. And so, you know, it's doing well and perhaps can do better in the future. But how do we deal then with newer festivals that less established organizations have that really need the fees to be waived, but they just don't have the same traction within our community? I just think those are things we need to think about. I don't think it has to be an all or none, as you've stated. But I think it's worth a discussion sooner rather than later, as we get closer and closer to the summer.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree, I'm thinking about all the criteria, you know, nonprofits, regional appeal, how are we gonna draw? I kind of agree with that, that maybe we... I'm also thinking about how many requests we might have before we get a policy in place.
Yeah.
Which I think we're reasonably safe on that.
Yeah, I do.
I, you know, so, you know...
We should be so lucky.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But that may not always be the case. So, yeah, I kind of agree with that, I'm, I'm in support of waiving some parking fees, and then we, we come up with some criteria for this.
Yeah, and I think one of the criteria may be, if I'm remembering correctly, I think a lot of us said, boy, I wish the Masons had come to us way earlier. Because it, it felt to us kind of like an eleventh-hour request, where we were being asked to waive those fees in a pretty quick turnaround timeline.
Timeout, whose phone is ringing?
Sorry, it was an alarm on my phone.
Okay, thank you for turning it off. Everybody silence your phone. Now, continue.
Uh, so, right, we had, it had felt at that time like it was a little bit of an eleventh-hour ask. And, you know, we all kind of said, you know, maybe we would have more wiggle room to consider this if it had been earlier. And this is pretty early. So, I think that, that would be my add, is as we're thinking about some of those criteria, thinking about that timeline too for discussion would be nice. But I would, I would echo, I think, what's been said, but Mike summed it up really well.
Yeah, I think, from my perspective, I would have a hard time saying no to anybody who we approved to have an event up there, if we approve this one, just saying that. I have a question, and that is, have you contacted the Uptown, the High Street businesses to see if they're okay with not having parking in front of their establishments?
I have not yet.
Okay, you might wanna do that before you go forward, because I know in the past, I've heard from some of them that they weren't all that excited about not having parking in front of their stores. So, you might check with that before you go all the way with, with that plan.
Yeah. So, one thing, I mean, we would say yes to everything if this wasn't budgetary and we have other issues, right? That we, I think we all agree on that. So, the issue, at least one issue, is whether it's revenue beneficial, right? So, it's not gonna be directly, but if we think it's gonna bring in so much business, that that comes back to us, so it doesn't actually build a budget hole, that's one meaningful criteria we could probably use to estimate. And another thing is, hopefully what we said tonight, if it is a precedent of some sorts, that at least it's only covering some of those fees. Cutting that in half is a big deal, I think, so at least let's stick to that, however we vote, I think.
I'd really think Mike hit on like, I could see building a rubric out of what Mike just said. You know, that if, if we're worried about money, then economic development impact ought to be a criterion. Nonprofit, you know, going back to the, some of the, the placemaking sort of things. I mean, some events, if I were to differentiate, the Masons event was a nice local event that was not likely going to pull in people to be visitors, you know, if you wanted to parse them. I mean, I think you could draw a line between different events. I think Amber's question about like those small startup events is gonna be a little bit trickier. But I, yeah, I think that, I, I, if we're gonna view this, it's gonna be as kind of an investment in, in economic development and placemaking, and it just matter whether we wanna do that.
I think it could be good for Uptown businesses if the people come in and then they go to these different businesses. I hope that they will be open. I had a discussion with one of our High Street businesses that was not open during the Saturday Farmer's Market. I said, you got all these people coming up here, it really ought to be open. So, I hope that that discussion happens as well.
Yeah, so, I agree, the criteria that you laid out is probably the way to go, but we can't cover that all tonight. But one thing we might be able to decide individually is that this might be viewed as revenue beneficial rather than costful. So, that would make sense to go forward. Also, though, if we wanna make sure that there's support for businesses losing parking, we could table this and hold off till we hear back from those businesses.
I guess I would just make a clarification, that we charge people the maximum rate for the parking, assuming full occupancy. So, it kind of is conservative estimate on what the loss would be to the city. I think on a summer Saturday, the likelihood that all of those things have cars parked in there eight hours for all those spots. So, it's a dollar figure that I think is somewhat abstract.
It's daunting, and I think that's what, that's what the Masons were trying to convey to us, is that it, it cut in so deeply into their profits that they weren't able to do as much charitable work with what they got out of it. Are you making a motion to table?
I can, but before that, I was just gonna say, one of the issues was setting that precedent, right? Even if it wasn't gonna cost us from the Masons event, if we set that going forward, it could cost us, because it's other times when it is full parking that they're taking out. If they did it right now, all those cars, all those slots would be filled, right? Multiple people per hour, so, I agree with your point, but it, it's situational, it's contextual.
Yeah.
Can I just confirm, last year was, did we waive all of these fees?
Didn't waive any.
Didn't waive any at all last year, okay.
And they weren't out on High Street either.
So...
They were on Park Place, but not High Street.
To my knowledge, the only time that we've waived any fees was a discount, not a waiver for the Porsche Show, back when it was first beginning in, I wanna say maybe twenty, what year is it? Twenty, twenty, twenty-fourteen. Back then, the parking rate was ten dollars per meter, and for their restart year, for one year only, council let them pay five dollars. So, they gave them a fifty percent discount for one year while they rebuilt. And then, since then, they have paid full price for parking.
But when we run our own events, we forego the, I mean, like Oxtoberfest, there was, we forewent meter revenue on those spots for our own events, and we ate the costs of the policing. So, at least in this case, we're getting someone contributing to the policing, so, I don't know where we, you know, it's what makes fair, I don't, I don't know.
I prefer not to table, I mean, if we're gonna pass it, just do it, but, you know, frankly.
Okay. Are there any further motions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution as amended indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, resolution is adopted, and we'll move to the second, Resolution B.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the 2024 Street Resurfacing and Maintenance Program at a cost of six hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars, with an alternative number three costing thirty-one thousand three hundred forty-six dollars, plus a contingency in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, for a total cost not to exceed seven hundred seventy thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mike, welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. We have approximately nine hundred thousand dollars budgeted this year in the capital improvement fund for covert restoration, street maintenance, street resurfacing, and reapplication of traffic control markings and signage. A lot of factors go into evaluating current street conditions of what we recommend to you for increased maintenance. This includes traffic volumes, how many cars and trucks are on the streets, condition of the base of the streets, curb and gutter condition, drainage conditions, past and planned utility, utility street cuts, and whether Miami has work planned for the area or other demolitions planned for the area. In addition, we also check our infrastructure inventory and check to see if we have any water, wastewater, natural gas, or other underground utility projects planned for the area. We certainly do not wanna improve a street and then have a cut later, very soon after. The list of the streets is published in Appendix A. We went out for bid, we opened bids on March first with three bids being provided to the city. Barrett Paving provided the lowest bid. We have worked with them for numerous years, they always do a great job for us. So, we're very happy with them, very happy with their bid. We recommend approval of the contract, along with the contingent, uh, alternate number three, pardon me, so that we can improve the intersection of Chestnut Brookville and Oxford-Greely Road. And that will coincide with the construction of the Oates Phase Four project as well. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, any questions, comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is adopted, and read scene.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the City of Oxford for one hundred percent of private side lead service line cost for customers participating in the city's lead service line replacement program.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, and Mike?
The Ohio EPA is placing a lot of demands on every public water system in Ohio. And one of the first demands will be due in October of this year, where every water system must provide an inventory of lead service lines, both, both on the private side of the line and the public side of the line. So, we're well ahead of the curve on that, we've done at least ninety-five percent of the entire water system. So, we have a, we leave a pretty good knowledge of where we have lead or galvanized pipe or service lines. The agency requires us to include galvanized pipes as lead service lines, because there is some lead in most of the zinc coatings on those pipes, so, we are accounting for that as well. In addition to the survey that's required, the agency will place significant demands on the utility. Anytime there's construction in the area of a known lead service line, we will be required to offer filtration pitchers to those residents. We're required to do sampling and analysis. There's stringent reporting requirements for the agency and to all of the users of the water. So, it's in our interest, obviously, aside from the economic factor, but from the health factor, to remove these hazards wherever we can. We believe that there are fewer than seventy-five lead service lines left in the city. We've been replacing them as we come upon them for the last decade or so. We've replaced close to two hundred already, so, we're down to a few. We propose that we lump these into one project and just take the policy that we are going to identify these and have them removed from the system, and the utility is going to absorb one hundred percent of the cost to do that.
Okay.
We would require an agreement from the property owner that acknowledges this gift, if you will, from the utility, from the city ratepayers, and that they acknowledge that they still will be required to maintain their private side of the line, just as they are currently and the rest of the water system currently does. We would apply to the EPA for revolving loan account, low-interest loan funding to pay for the project. We expect it would cost just north of two hundred thousand dollars to do this. Hopefully, we would get as low as zero percent interest, and we would hope that we could qualify for, we're hopeful, a fifty-three percent principal forgiveness for the problem, for the project. So, we, we do have a, a nice item on our website, City of Oxford, a Lead Safe Community. Residents can click on that, there's a survey. If you have knowledge about your particular household, you can input data, and of course, we will include that in our survey. There's a lot of tips on there, if you do have a lead service line, of how to mitigate that and how to minimize your risk until the service line can be replaced.
Super.
So, we do at least thirty separate samplings and analysis from scattered around through mainly the mile square. The action level established by the EPA is fifteen parts per billion, and we are routinely averaging under two parts per billion. So, knock our hard water, but it does have a protective coating on the inside of our service lines. So, in that regard, our hard water is served as well. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors?
What an awesome program.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, I love everything about this. Any ideas to timeline, how, you know, a year to do these last seventy-five or...
We would finalize our inventory no later than October, and we would plan a project for most likely summer of 2025. And hopefully by then, we would have acknowledged funding from Ohio EPA as well.
I think it's good to get it done before we get the soft water here, since the hard water's been so protective.
We are doing extensive corrosion control analysis, uh, with our pilot plant and we're being, uh, as cautious as anyone could be as we design this new softening plant so that we do not impact water quality.
Excellent.
I like hearing that.
I think we don't want to be like a certain city in Michigan.
It will be so nice to just be able to categorically say in a few years, we have no lead service lines in the City of Oxford and just, cause I think any ambiguity, people have concerns and, and they just don't know and so.
I think that's one of our responsibilities.
Uh, but on the private side, you know, I mean, I think it's really awesome. I think that's, it's not just our own lines, it's property owner lines too.
And it's particularly important for lead because unlike many other things, it's not a threshold, it's, it builds from any amount at all, there's some level of damage.
Yep. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted and we'll move to D.
A resolution of council authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Clean Ohio Trails Fund for five hundred thousand dollars as a matching grant to the OKI funding received for the construction of Phase Five of the Oxford Area Trail and authorizing the city manager to utilize funds raised by the Oates Property Tax Levy to fund a twenty percent local match if this grant is awarded.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening. So Phase Five of the Oxford Area Trail is planned to begin construction in July of twenty twenty-five and would be completed by July of twenty-six. This phase will connect the Talawanda High School to the Talawanda Middle School and provide a connection up to Chestnut Fields Multimodal Facility. This Phase Five will cost an estimated five point one million to construct and we have a grant from OKI for two point seven million. That means our local match is two point three million, uh, a little over that. And so this five hundred thousand dollar grant will just help toward our match and we're, we're good and covered on that twenty percent. Um, so it would be our hope that we get this to kind of supplement our match, um, and that's what our request is this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, seeing none. Counselors, have any comments or questions? Dave, you look like you're ready.
I'm, so, so we, we put a twenty percent match towards a five hundred thousand dollar grant that can then be used as a match for something else? Is that, I'm understanding the math on that.
So, we're applying for the five hundred thousand to help offset our match.
Okay.
But that two point three million match requirement counts as our twenty percent.
Okay.
You know, and so because OKI is federal dollars, we're allowed to apply for Clean Ohio is state dollars as a match. You cannot match federal to federal, um, which is why we can never use ARPA to help with some of this kind of stuff. But yeah, state funds matching federal funds and that's an allowable use.
Well, I just have to, uh, laugh a little bit, feeling a little bit nostalgic because a decade ago, Clean Ohio was the first grant we got to pay for the first phase of the Oxford Area Trail. And, and at that time, you know, it was a little bit of a risk, cause we said, well, if you have to apply for a grant, you're gonna have to come up with a local match. And we were really hesitant. We got the grant and didn't know where the local match would come from, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And we thought, oh, maybe we just can't do this. And ten years later, um, this single phase is gonna cost five point two million dollars, you know, so we, our ambitions and our scope and our scale and our capacities have grown and I think it's grown because we've learned that like, sometimes if you, you pay the twenty percent, you get the other eighty percent back, you know? And so I think we've used local tax dollars, uh, on the levy very wisely and those dollars have paid dividends. So thank you to everybody, um, yeah, we, we would have, ten years ago, we wouldn't have been able to imagine talking to some of these numbers, the complexity of the phases, yet here we are, so it's pretty cool.
I think we also owe a lot of gratitude to our Assistant City Manager Jessica, who is an eagle looking for those grant opportunities and we appreciate it.
Staff in general, I mean, we, they're pulling down the dollars.
Okay, is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted and we'll move to E.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the water and sanitary capacity benefit charges for the Butler County Regional Transit Authority's Multimodal Transportation Center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug?
Yes, the Butler County Regional Transit Authority, BCRTA, is constructing a twenty-three point seven million dollar multimodal transportation center located on West Chestnut Street. The facility will provide a one-stop transfer location for BCRTA services in Oxford and serving Miami University, as well as connections to Hamilton and other regional destinations. The facility will also include back the house transit operations, including indoor vehicle storage, vehicle fueling, vehicle washing, and maintenance areas. So this facility will also provide a waiting area with ticket and train schedule information for our Amtrak platform stop. So I'm recommending that city council waive the water and sanitary capacity benefit charges for the BCRTA's Multimodal Transportation Center. Since this facility has broad public transportation benefit for the community, BCRTA will still be liable for the water meter and tap fees, as well as the inspection fees for both water and wastewater. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, is there, um, anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, I want to make note that we received a comment on this, um, by the web.
Yes, we did.
Just wanna let that person know that we have read their comment and, and appreciate it very much. Um, any comments or concerns by council?
I'd express my gratitude to Doug for this. I know that we, again, try to do things fairly, um, and I think that this is one of these things, it's, it's really good that we can be a small investor in a project that benefits us. I mean, uh, BCRTA has managed to bring down those twenty-three million dollars and it benefits our Amtrak station and, you know, so I, I, I hope that while this, although this is revenue that we're foregoing, it, it may be better than having to budget dollars and do it, you know, so it's, it's dollars. We're, we are, we have some skin in the game in that facility, but, um, hopefully, this is the less painful way to do it than, than having to budget for, I mean, it's, again, it's, it's revenue that we will not see, but I think it's for good reason. So I really appreciate that, the approach just about this, and I know you had qualms that had to think about the right thing to do and the right way, the best way to do this, um, so thank you.
Doug, do we know the amount?
Yes.
That that comes up to?
Surely.
Cause it's not in the resolution.
Water and sewer capacity benefit charges are eighty-eight thousand one hundred dollars and the remaining fees are thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty. So the total fees were one hundred and one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So as you can see, the majority of the fees were water and sanitary sewer capacity benefit charges and I'm recommending that those be waived now. Uh, I, I could also share with you, it's our hope that, uh, we'll be able to wash some of our vehicles in the wash area. They're gonna build the facility to handle it, but they won't have the equipment. So this might help them acquire that equipment and, uh, that's another reason why I'm recommending it to city council.
So it could be to the city's advantage to have that equipment.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselors? Ready?
I was just gonna say, it's, uh, significant, especially considering our budget conditions, but also there's twenty-three point seven million being put into this for something that we certainly share in the benefit for, so a hundred thousand versus that is not significant.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted and we'll move, well, we have no ordinances and so we'll move to our discussion item. And our discussion item is fire and EMS staffing and additional funding and I'd like to recognize city manager.
Yes, so this is basically a follow-up from our several work sessions about a very important topic, which is, uh, our need for additional staffing and fire and EMS and how we'll fund those additional positions. And what I'd like to do first is ask our fire chief, John Deathridge, to step forward and present some information on staffing options. Uh, several council members expressed a desire to hear from John. I know Jessica and I've done most of the talking, so we're gonna allow John an opportunity to present some information and after John presents his information, I'll ask Jessica to step up to the podium and present some information on how we're gonna finance those staffing options. And then I'll make some closing comments and we'll allow council to ask questions. Uh, I think John and Jessica and myself will be glad to answer any questions council member have during the presentation and that's our plan tonight. As you know, this is a very, very important topic for the city. Uh, we have lost several firefighters just recently, firefighter paramedics, uh, so we need to address this, it's, it's utmost important. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Before John gets up, I just wanted to say that I am going to recognize the public, if anyone wants to comment on this, after we've had this presentation. So I just wanted them to know that.
Thank you.
Welcome, John.
Hello.
Glad to have you here.
I appreciate the opportunity to see me. Mike's gonna pull up, uh, there, look at that.
You did it.
He's like magic. It did take me all day to figure out how to put this picture on here. Gonna talk a little bit about what our staffing levels are now and what we're, uh, looking at staffing-wise to try to get us out of this mess we're in. Our current staffing with, uh, three people that were added for this year, the full-time people haven't been hired yet, but we've got six on shift at full staffing and running a minimum of five, which is what we were doing before. Uh, that's filling that with four full-time people and two part-time people on a daily basis, with a total of twelve full-time employees would be full staffing. That consists of a shift captain, a crew of two on the ambulance, one paramedic, one EMT, and a crew of three on the engine, two medics, and one EMT. And that would leave one person available on the engine should we have a second EMS call, because the two, to, to man that EMS unit would have to come off of the engine. So it basically puts our engine out of service when we have two EMS calls. The first proposal is going to eight on shift and that would be six full-time people, two part-time people, for a total of eighteen full-time employees with a shift captain, crew of two on the ambulance, three on the engine, and they would cross-staff the third ambulance, so that would give us the ability to run the third ambulance and, uh-oh. And a crew of two cross-staffing the ladder tanker and the second ambulance. So basically, we would drop the ladder, those two people would run the second ambulance on a second, uh, ambulance call. Adding those extra paramedics allows the guys a break where they wouldn't be running the, the squad every shift, so it would be spreading them out more. We could also split our territory, another thing I've thought about is splitting our territory into two districts, uh, kinda like what the setup would be if we had two stations. Uh, but we'd be running them out of one location, uh, it would split the workload up for the primary EMS calls between two units. So instead of two guys taking the brunt of all the calls, it'd be spread out over four, theoretically, half and half, so the workload wouldn't be near as bad. Second proposal's nine on shift, seven full-time, two part-time, total of twenty-one full-time employees. So two guys on the ambulance, a crew of three on the engine, cross-staffing the third ambulance, leaving one available for the engine should the third ambulance go out, a crew of three cross-staffing the ladder and the second ambulance, and that would leave one available for the ladder should the second ambulance be out. So we'd at least be able to get it on the road. That would spread it out to probably every fifth or sixth shift, you'd be riding the primary ambulance. We could also do the two district approach, that would spread it out some more, um, with everyone in station and make it possible for three simulta, simultaneous EMS calls and still have two people available on the engine should we get a fire call. The third proposal's ten on shift, that's two on the ambulance, a crew of two on the ambulance, a crew of two dedicated to the second ambulance, and a crew of three on the engine, who would not have to cross-staff another unit. So we would always have a three-person engine available. A crew of two cross-staffing the ladder and the third ambulance. That's the best option, if you want to be able to provide, you know, two dedicated ambulances and still have three people dedicated to the fire engine, so that we have a fire response at all times. So that's, that's the best bet right there service-wise for the people. Couple of updates, uh, last week, we had a shift captain and another firefighter medic resign. Uh, that leaves us with two captains to run three shifts and three paramedics for three shifts. So beginning April first, we'll no longer be able to staff the second ambulance with a paramedic, it'll be a basic level unit. And Milford Township will receive, uh, two MT basic ambulances for their contract since we've backed down our level of service. In conclusion, added staff not only spreads the workload out on our very busy ambulance, it also gives us more reasonable number of firefighters for structured fires, more firefighters on scene significantly increases the efficiency of firefighting operations. In your packet, I also included a, a NIST, uh, NIST study from, I think it's the Federal Department of Commerce, um, that shows more folks, more efficient, get the job done better. The driving force between our people, for our people leaving is run volume, staffing, and last, lack of close mutual aid. Uh, by increasing staffing, we'll have less of a need for mutual aid. Twenty minutes for the next crew to arrive is concerning when you're inside a burning building. So right now, you know, we're running five guys. We make an ambulance call, we've got three guys left. That puts one guy running a pump and two guys to fight a fire. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be in that building like that. Keep in mind, none of these staffing models provide for the needed forty-hour staff to manage the operation. I'm a one-man show. Assistant Chief Training Officer, EMS Officer, and Fire Safety Inspector are needed positions for progressive fire and EMS operation. By not instituting, instituting a stepped approach to the fire department staffing, we've backed ourselves into a corner. Departments with comparable call volumes in the area have multiple stations and our staff are three times the people we have. This makes recruiting impossible. You know, where would, where would you choose to work? Uh, we need to make a significant change to our staffing model to attract trained applicants. And that's all I've got for you, unless you've got questions.
I have a comment. I, I don't think there's any issue that's more urgent on our agenda right now and I think all of my colleagues would agree that we need a vibrant fire department, so. And we need to go easy, easier on people. You can't just burn them out and that's obviously what's going on.
Absolutely.
And it's not fair.
Absolutely.
Jessica? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So after our last, um, excuse me, Glenn, can you hear me? Can you get my ClickShare on? Thank you. So after our last work session, we had presented, um, six new staff, three this year and then three, um, a few years later. And then with the loss of two more staff this week and, um, we really realized, we need to really talk about what are our needs, um, as far as staffing, to be able to, um, you know, recruit, retain, and also allow some rest if you're working a twenty-four-hour shift. And so that's what, um, Chief Deathridge just shared with you are some options. And so then what I'm gonna share with you is what those deficit numbers mean. Um, and so they are, they are big, um, but we also want to have just a really honest conversation about what we can look at. So, um, the first one here is, um, with eighteen full-time staff and the full deficit would be on average two million a year. Now, this is not with any contribution from Miami, this is the full deficit amount, an average annual deficit amount. The next one is with twenty-one staff, which was the middle tier that we had talked about and that deficit goes up to two point one per year. And then the final with twenty-four staff is two point three million a year. And so we just wanted to bring those numbers. And so we just wanted to bring those numbers to your attention. And then, you know, of course Miami has verbally committed to helping with us, but they want us to kind of come with a number to talk about, and we need to decide our scale and scope first, and then we can go and have those next conversations. So those next conversations will occur after we decide what our goal numbers are. And so I will stop there. And I think Mr. Elliott, you had some
Yeah.
final comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well if you have them.
Yeah. Do you have my PowerPoint?
I do.
So Chantel had, she's not able to join us tonight, but she had sent a question which I answered for council, but I also wanted to share it with the public. And that's slide number, I finally numbered them. It's slide number 25. So, and it wasn't in my earlier packet, but she had asked if Miami's property was taxable, what would they pay? And so I contacted the county auditor and found out for 2023, which is the current tax year, as you know, we pay in arrears. Their valuation is $254 million, as you can see there. And if we went with a 2.15 mil levy, just one example, that equates to about $550,000 in property tax revenue for Miami University. So that just gives you an idea if their property was taxable, which it is not, what we would raise with a 2.15 mil levy. But now, what the millage that we're going to recommend depends on which proposal we go with. And so I did want to provide that. One of the things that we're going to have to do, assuming we do move forward with some property tax levy, is that we'll have to pass two resolutions. As we did for the Oats Trail, for example, the 3.45 levy, 3.25 levy for the Oats Trail. But you have to go, we'll have to ask the auditor for certification of estimated property tax revenue to be received. Now, we have a pretty good estimate, but we would, this is required under statute. What we did for the oats levy, we had three different proposed levies just to give us an idea what we would raise. We may do a similar thing with this, but that'll be up to city council. And then the second resolution that we have to pass is a resolution of necessity. Once we determine which millage we want to recommend to the voters, we have to pass a resolution of necessity. As you know, resolutions only take one reading, but we have to have all our work done by August the 7th. And as Chris pointed out, we want to give ourselves time in case we don't, we make a mistake and, you know, and then we miss that deadline. So have to have everything done by August the 7th. So I did want to share that with city council since Chantel had asked that question. I also made a comment at the last council meeting that if we utilize the same formula that I use for Oxford Township and Milford Township, where we take the expenditures for a year. And then we minus out EMS billing. And with that remainder amount of expenditures, that I then apply a percentage. And if we did that for Miami University's facilities and on-campus students, that works out to be about the same number. So that just gives you two ideas.
What's St. Denver?
About 600,000.
Although that doesn't include off-campus student issues.
It does not include off-campus. So I just wanted to give you that information as well too. As you know, there's no perfect formula. And, you know, we will be going back to Miami and getting a number, giving them a number, but wanted you to have this information. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Before we do that, so keep your questions in mind. I have several. I'm sure the rest of you do as well. I want to give the public an opportunity if anyone would like to address this issue before council discusses it. Is there anybody who'd like to address it?
Who can address council's?
Sure.
My name's Chris Conard, 936 Shots Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, and I'm the father of a Miami student. You know, obviously I've had a chance to listen to this discussion and I understand the issues. I also understand some of the causation on why the fire department is stretched. I have no problem if council were to approach the university to say there should be some user, some fee associated with a student if that would have some impact. I mean, I consider that to be a modest price to pay to have the type of safety system, safety net in place to protect my daughter and her roommates and the other students.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this? Jeff, welcome.
Speaking to you as a resident of the city of Oxford, Jeff Robinson of Old Woods Drive here in Oxford. I've had the unfortunate timing of having to use the Oxford Fire EMS service. And during those times, it was very comforting knowing the level of professionalism they carry, knowing that they are full paramedics, that they can treat patients with pre-hospital care that is second to none. To hear that we're losing paramedics, that we won't be able to offer that service on a first or second bound ambulance service is very, very troubling. The things that keep me up at night are what's going to happen when that's needed, what's going to happen when that's needed to my neighbors, to my family. But more importantly, what's going to happen when those are needed by the people that I take charge of in the police department? The threats that exist in this world are out there, whether they're fire-related, whether they're gunshot-related, whether there's some type of trauma-related are real. And having people there for us when we need them should be the most important thing this council talks about this year. I could tell you that, you know, the police department needs more staffing, the Parks and Rec needs more things, that all these different departments have our needs and we have our wish lists. But in good faith, I can't come to you and talk to you about any of those things until we address the fire department. Nothing was more telling than this past weekend when Chief Jones and I were in Logan County, Ohio, helping with the assessments to tornado damage that occurred up there. And hearing the stories from the firefighters and first responders that responded to that event about we couldn't do anything, we didn't have people, we were not prepared, we did not have the tools, the personnel needed to respond to an event like this. We're very similar to that community where we're far away from help and we need all the help we can get up here. So I would just end my comments with urging you to take this seriously, to take this charge as something that's very, very important to the residents of this town, the students in this town, but the people that work in this town that we need the help. So with that, I'll end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I really appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this issue? Okay, counselors, I'll hold my comments to the end.
Do you want me to start?
Well, whoever wants to start.
I think I'm one of the counselors who asked for this meeting, and it was mostly not to talk about how it's funded in the future. Because I think no matter how long that will take, it will be too long, whether it's a levy, whether it's Miami, some combination, anything. I feel like this is basically an emergency situation and we need to find some level of funding immediately. And so we can talk about where it's coming from. I have positions on that. I have additional ideas on how to calculate it. But is there something in between? Maybe that does involve Miami too for not a long-term solution, but maybe an emergency immediate solution. I don't know if, could we work out a loan and low percentage to cover this? But this is, I recently spoke to some people on the inside. They didn't even realize I was on council. I didn't make that abundantly clear at that moment. So they weren't pitching me. They weren't selling me. I just heard their real stories. They just happened to come out in natural conversation. And it was scary. And it was scary for everybody who's served in this community, as just mentioned. And it was scary for them because it was hurting their family. It was hurting their health. And we're losing people from this, which means this situation just compounds and gets worse and worse. So we need to do something. We need to do something quick. And that doesn't even have to be a long-term solution. No, we need that. We need something immediate, as immediate as can be.
Anybody else?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm glad that we're, we've been talking about this on and on. I mean, the threats of this have been building for a number of years. And I think this is just going to be a kind of a, it's reached a kind of a decision point, and it's a decision point for council. It's going to be a decision point for Miami University, and I think ultimately it'll have to be a decision point for the voters. Because we can talk about what we want to do, but it's going to have to be a voter decision if an additional tax levy is needed. You know, so I guess to me, I'm just, if I'm a voter though, these issues are complicated. I've been listening to these conversations and I'm piecing it all together. But so correct me if I'm wrong, if there were going to be an FAQ document on like, why do we need a levy for the fire department? Correct me if I'm wrong. We're already understaffed and in deficit, right? You know, like even under current conditions, and it's not, we're not in deficit because of mismanagement of funds by the city of Oxford. Staffing costs have grown. Our ability to retain, we have to pay people more. The call volumes have grown, particularly on campus, but also off. So it's like not the city, these are structural things that have built up. And so we already have a deficit even at a staffing level where we can't provide the services that we need. So that is really worrisome. And so, I mean, the questions are going to be to the, the public are going to have, well, what is Miami doing? And I think that's going to be a key thing for people. And I think if we can assure them that, then they're going to figure like, what's my responsibility in this? And, and I think that, again, to me, it's been, it's a lot of numbers, but it comes down to the nature of firefighting and the nature of the job. And our current system is unsustainable at a human level. I mean, it's just exhausting people. And they, we're in a market where highly skilled people can make good or better money elsewhere, working less hard. Or at least getting a little more sleep. And, and so, yeah, I think we're at a decision point, and I think we've, we've been talking about it long enough. It's going to be time to go. I can't see an option that doesn't involve us going to the voters on this. And, and my, my feeling is, is that the property tax, we would love to do it through an income tax so that employees would pay. But I think if we want it to be equitable, the students will ultimately, in the long-term, pay through their property taxes. So that captures the off-campus students. So I really appreciate the numbers. I appreciate hearing from the chief. You know, I hope that we can find a way to take that number and divide it up and that we can go to the voters with something that's reasonable. And I believe based on previous elections, they'll support it. So that's just reflections.
Anybody on this side of the table?
Yeah, so I agree with Jason. I think that this is a kind of parallel question. What can we do right now to let even a fraction of the pressure off what's happening right now? I live in kind of what I'll call like a probably high call volume part of town, and I heard what sounded like a car crash immediately followed by sirens the other night. And it was a Saturday night, and I said, wow, I really hope that a kid doesn't overdose or need their stomach pumped because what are we going to do? So I've been thinking about this a lot, a lot. So thank you, Jason, for mentioning the like high need solution for right now. Chief Deathridge, a question for you. So what I heard is proposal three. Oh. Plot twist, need the PowerPoint. Okay, so what I heard is proposal three, dream scenario, is that, that is your best recommendation? But it would be proposal three with the asterix of the additional administrative staffing. So you are no longer a team of one. Is that correct?
Sure would be nice.
Okay. Did we add that additional administrative staffing into kind of what we'll, like the, the proposal three for the deficit?
Yeah, it wasn't included, so we would have to go back and figure that out.
Okay. I would like to see that included. I, I really think if we're going to do this right so that we don't just kick the can down the road and then end up having this exact conversation five years from now, 10 years from now, go big or go home, for lack of a much better phrase. So if we're going to do the dream scenario, let's do the experts' dream scenario. Let's at least run those numbers. I think when it comes to Miami, I agree. I think we go to them with a big number, but with significant reservations because I have been watching Miami cut what a lot of people would call critical things to, you know, being a university. And there are other OU failed to, even though the students and parents have said, yes, I would fully pay a $50, $100 fee. OU failed to even get this out of their student senate to bring it forward to their board of trustees. So I would not hang my hat securely on anything from Miami until we see that money in hand. So I agree. I do think we're going to have to go to the voters. And then it's incumbent upon us to emphasize how critical this is. We, I think to Lieutenant Robinson's point, this also keeps me up at night. Like I can't stop thinking about how important this is. We are hanging on by the, I don't even know if we have skin on our teeth anymore. So we need to address this and we need to address it now. And I think it's particularly interesting that we're having this conversation today when in two days it is one of the biggest drinking days on Miami's campus or uptown. And we're going to be asking our already extraordinarily stretched EMTs and paramedics to go uptown and help a bunch of college students
Deal with silliness.
offload some green fluid from their bodies. So yeah, just thank you to Chief Deathridge for coming forward with his plan. Thank you to his team for being here tonight. I know you've come to us before. But yeah, I think it's go time to really take this seriously.
Mike?
So I'm thinking, I haven't looked at our general fund balance in a while, but I'm thinking no matter what solution we come up with, that we're possibly a year out. I'm just thinking, is there a way to transfer a loan from the general fund so that the chief can get a few more people going? Because again, I see staff in the audience. I remember our talk at Meet the Candidates Night in November. You were beat up then, and we're headed into high season and you're short staffed more than ever now. Just we could try to get somewhere ahead of time.
I had asked for this to be on a discussion item, and when I look at the difference between proposal one and proposal three, if we're already sitting at $2 million for proposal one.
Right.
I think an extra $300,000 to get us to proposal three, although we know we don't have all the staffing numbers in there, but I
I mean, if you want a quick number, I put in two more FTE, $100,000 each, it brings you 2.5 million.
Right. I, I just think that's almost chump change, not, not exactly, right? But it's like a quarter of the base of 200, $2 million to begin with. You know, I think many of us sitting here have heard about what happened at North College Hill, where several of the firefighters tendered their resignation, and they pulled it back because the city has responded. But we could not afford that. And I think we need to think about the trickle-down effects. We've been talking about things like housing and increasing density and, and like who's going to serve all of these individuals? Like this is like a foundational aspect of, of infrastructure if we want to grow a city. The university is going to grow the student body because, you know, they need the tuition base and those types of things. I mean, it's grown quite a bit since I first got here 13 years ago. I think we nearly, we need to truly take that seriously. And I think the voters will support this. I think, I think they will. I think they see the importance. They see the value. This is not saying that we don't go to Miami. But fortunately, unfortunately, I don't know, like it does come down to us, like we're the city. And, you know, I'd like to feel like Miami would step up and we wouldn't have to push too hard, but they're telling us, come to them with a number first. But I agree with Alex is that we can't necessarily assume that it's going to work in our favor. I know what the parents would want to do, but again, if we can go with proposal three, I think a $500,000 difference isn't that dramatic for what we need.
So my comment is, this is an exigency. This is something we need to deal with right away. I appreciate the chief coming up and giving us the detail. I think we are of a mind of what I've heard, to go with proposal three, I strongly support that. I think we go to, you know, take a loan from ourselves and we have to do it now. We can't wait. This is not a wait moment. This is a do it now moment. I want to report that when, when we were meeting with Miami, ahead of time, we talked about what our arguments would be to persuade them that it was really important for them to take their part. None of that was necessary. They immediately said, you're right. We need to do our part. And I will, until they prove And I will, until they prove me wrong, I will trust them that they will be honest brokers in, in that respect. I want us to come up with a fair number and go on the high side rather than the low side. I think that the comment that was made by Chris is, is really appropriate here. I'd, I've had two children go through Miami and an extra hundred bucks a year? I, I'd give that in a flash to keep my kids safe. And I think the people in Oxford will vote for a levy that will keep them safe. You know, this is something we have to do and we have to trust for the moment that Miami will do their part. If they don't do their part, then we will have another discussion of how to react. But I think we just go forward with a good faith assumption that Miami will do their part if we give them a good defensible number. I think that it would be a percentage of the cost rather than a percentage of the deficit. So that's, that's my position on that. But I think we give them that number and see what they can do. But we need to move right ahead with the levy. We know there's going to have to be one. We have to figure out what will be a reasonable amount for that levy to be that will cover these costs. And we do it now. I don't think we wait around for this. And I think the firefighters that remain need to know that we support them. And they need to know that we're behind them and that we're going to do something. That we're not just going to play around with it or push the can down the road as Alex said.
Yeah, that helps coming. I think that's really important. And like I said, I did this because we need an emergency answer, but long-term solutions also came up tonight. So I'd like to put out my position on that. One thing I'd like to suggest is, as a means of figuring out a number, how about percent of adult population in the town accounting for how long students are in? I think that'll give you a pretty fair number. I know the, I know our city supports our Fire and EMS. They know how important it is. Also though, I've heard a lot of things said about how this is a lot, given change in property value evaluation in terms of school district levies. I think if we're going to go the route of a levy, that it should be set up so that it is a not permanent levy, but a short-term levy to cover how long it would take to put in student fees by each year. As we talked about last time, how tuition is set, right? So they can only cover it as new students come in and then tuition changes. Well, that number will be larger at first, but shrink as those student fees start to cover all four years of school, right? A levy that would cover that difference would be great. I think people would be a lot more supportive if they knew it was going to end and not be an indefinite addition to their tax burden. And I just want to point out, you, you mentioned a, a school that student government didn't approve it. I gave a talk in front of the student government about this topic. No one.
We didn't get any back.
Nobody said anything negative. And then people came up to me afterward trying to help out, right? And there was a previous survey done at Miami that said there was general support for this. And Miami, even though they're cutting things right now, I don't think they should be. And either does the teachers' union that did an evaluation of how healthy their business numbers are, and they were quite healthy. And their endowment has increased on average 30 million a year for the last 10 years. They're now up to $730 million. So we're talking, if we wanted a million dollars from them, that's one-seventh of a percentage point, right? That's .14, not 1/4, .14. If we double that, that's two-sevenths of a percentage point. That is nothing. And I know endowments are earmarked, but they're not totally earmarked, right? That's not all accounted for. And it grows. This is not a significant number for them. And it's for helping serve their population, which is overwhelmingly larger than the adult population in town. Right? Like it's not even close. We're overwhelmingly a college town, but we don't get the proportionate buy-in for services that they use at a decent rate between campus and also individual students. I don't think it's too much to ask a lot from them because a lot in terms of helping us is not a lot to them. It's one-seventh, it's two-seventh, right? It's not significant. And the student fee, if they didn't take it from the endowment, is a hundred dollars on 14, 15, $20,000, depending on what options they're going with, right? We need that help. But all that is beside the point now that we need emergency help immediately before we handle the long-term solution, which I would hope seriously includes Miami. And I would prefer a commitment rather than just trust. Because even though if we trust them that it's coming, I wouldn't put it past them to delay that as soon as possible. And ultimately, if they don't contribute, what I think is fair, we have to say, you need to get your own services. Cause we can't keep funding that ourselves.
Doug?
Well, I think we've got a lot of thoughtful comments and we'll run some new numbers. I'll be working up some resolutions that I won't put on the agenda, but I'll put those in my report to council. Because I do want to keep us moving forward. In relationship to Mike's comments about can we borrow from the general fund? It's a good comment. Keep in mind that we did transfer $400,000 this year to go ahead and, and get the three additional paramedics, firefighter paramedics. You know, get those filled. I can bring in a supplemental and we can do three more. Keep in mind that the levy, if we get it on the November ballot, which may not be the best election, as we know, it'll be a big turnout because it's a presidential election. And typically the highest turnout in Oxford is a presidential, followed by gubernatorial, followed by a council election is the lowest turnout we get. And I think it's because students aren't as involved in our local government as they are in state, federal government. But we'll get that money if we get it on the ballot in 2025. I believe, but I'll check to make sure of that.
So you're proposing we wait a year?
No, 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 not, no, not at all. We'll get it on the ballot, but we won't get the money until 2025.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I.
That's why it's important to go.
We need to get those existing positions filled.
We do.
And uh.
And we need to add positions and we need to do it right away.
Yes.
It just feels so weird talking about the levy before we know the contribution, but.
I know, I know, but you know, I think we all understand that we are not in a position to do a standoff. And I agree with Mayor Snively. I mean, we were, Jessica and I were at that meeting and you know, I saw a different Miami than I've seen in, in past meetings. They recognize our situation and they, they want to be part of the solution. And like the mayor said, until they prove us wrong, I'm going to have confidence in Miami.
And I think that's an appropriate position for us to take as long as they come through.
So and I, I just, I, I think that it's, I'm glad, as a number of people have noted, that we're, we haven't always had these conversations in the filmed public meeting. We've, you know, so to some people, this is going to be somewhat new news, you know, because they haven't been as tuned in as other people have been walking, looking at our work sessions. But you know, I think that we've reached an emergency point. But this conversation has been years in the making. I mean, you had that public session on campus, the Armstrong Student Center, must've been two years at least, right?
Yep.
Maybe even, maybe even more. Doug has been talking about the possible need for levy for some time. And I know that some people probably, particularly in our, you know, public safety community, think that we on council have perhaps dragged our heels on this. But I think we've wanted to explore every possible option before going to the voters. You know, I think that in recognition of the school, in recognition of the property revaluation, you know, I, I do agree that if, if it's a, it's a marginal difference between 2.1 million dollars and 2.5, we should go big. But it's not because we haven't tried to explore every alternative other than a levy.
You could also do a time-limited levy.
Yes.
That would be renewed and that way we could adjust the amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we do a, put a limit on it. I mean, the, the advantage is that we would have to go back to the voters. As you know, any outside millage gets reduced over time. As values go up, the tax rate goes down. That's not true with inside millage. That continues to get, continues to grow as values grow. But not outside millage, which this would be, which the Oats levy would be. Because if you look and see what we bring in on the Oats levy at 3.25, it's different than what we're projecting we would bring in at, at 3.25. And that's because the values have gone up. And so by putting a time limit on it, the advantage is that, you know, we go back to the voters and maybe ask for the same rate again and get additional money. Now, of course, what that means for the taxpayers is they'll pay more for it. The disadvantage is we have to go back to the voters. So there's pluses and minuses if you put a limit on it.
And just a, a final thought is that I think that the voters locally have seen what happens when you vote down a levy with a local institution that is running in deficit, you know? There are really unpleasant choices that you'd, you'd rather not see. You know, so I think that like, we're talking about fire EMS, but this is ultimately, this levy is, if we fund fire and EMS, it means that the parks can remain fully funded. And you know, like, like, cause those services, if, 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 if not funded, we're going to have to make this up out of the general fund. And $2 million worth of the general fund is whole departmental budgets, you know? Uh, so if we value the broader array of services, I mean, so you're not only getting good firefighting, EMS, EMT, care, paramedics, you're also continued to have your parks funded and your community development funded and your police funded. I think it would be a good investment. But again, we have to recognize it's going to be a choice for voters because it's, it's not wonderful with the property revaluation. You know, it'd be a hard decision for people and I think they'll do the right thing.
Just going to say before you close, I'm certainly okay with a timed levy. I would prefer that because I think it helps hold us accountable and help hold Miami accountable. Right? If there's a permanence to it, then there's a lot of incentive to not help pay in your fair share.
Yep.
And another thing is, I, I do take some blame for this. I think we relate to this. We should have headed it off much earlier and I think that's on us. I think we've done a lot of great things as council, but this is one thing I think I've come up short on. And so I apologize for that and I hope we can help resolve it.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions? I just want to be clear because there's some things that I need to do and be thoughtful of as we know that, given the, the, the number of you who have connections to Miami that might raise potential conflicts, I've got to look into that. There's also been some, some rather onerous provisions that have been put forth from the auditor's office as it relates to how elected officials might be able to engage in the process of levies and what you can and can't do. So I've got, I want to be clear. The, 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 the thought now is that there's likely going to have to be a levy. So I need to consider how that activism and promotion of that levy might impact each of you in your role as elected official. And it is pretty clear that there's going to be some expectation of contribution from Miami that might be in the form of, and this is not intended to be a limiting comment at all, but potentially a contribution of some defined amount. It could also include some effort by the university to impose some type of fee upon students that would take years, a few years to implement. And whatever else might be part of that discussion.
In terms of dialogue, we're free though, until a levy is put on the ballot, to support or not support it.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, there, we're.
Making that clear.
Yeah, well, a, a, and the key part of that is, is the expenditure of, of public money. It would be deemed to support the levy. To be blunt, there is some nonsensical aspects of this because the decisions would arguably limit your First Amendment rights to support something that you've clearly voted on to say, I support this by your yes vote and all of these other comments. And if you ask me to reconcile what those opinions say with what that means you can and can't do based on interpretation, I will not be able to do that because it is completely illogical. But until there's a discussion about public expenditure and time, I don't have to go there, but I will prepare for you that, prepare you for that.
Thank you. Do you have what you need?
I do.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And that takes us to announcements and communications. I'll start with city manager.
Okay, uh, thank you, your honor. Well, with the solar eclipse, we got a email today from Rumpke. And they want to remind us that they do pick up solid waste and recycling on Monday here in Oxford to, they're asking residents to make sure they put it out the evening before, which would be Sunday. So if you have a Monday pickup, please get your solid waste and recycling out to the curb because they expect that we may have some travel issues. And they even mentioned fuel shortages and communication problems, solid internet, so on and so forth. And of course, as we know, we, uh, who knows how big the crowd will be here in Oxford? You know, and we've had, staff has had a lot of meetings dealing with this issue. And we'll do the best we can with the staff that we have. One last note is that we received a letter today from the Rail Development Commission. Scott Otto was successful in obtaining money for this rail grade crossing elimination program. And they, Scott and engineering staff are to be congratulated for getting money to do this study. This would be for at-grade rail crossing, Contreras Road, excuse me. This would be an above or below grade crossing at Contreras Road and Locust Street. But it also includes looking at some of the at-grade crossings and maybe eliminating one or, or whatnot. So, but I did want to mention that because we've talked about this for some time. And Scott Otto and the engineering staff, Mike's staff are to be congratulated for, for obtaining this grant from the Ohio Rail Development Commission. They'll manage this grant, as I understand it. And that's all I have this evening, your honor.
Great news.
Could I ask a question real quick? Is there any chance we can get pickup on Tuesday? So we don't have the trash of 30,000 people sitting around for a week?
Don't know. We'll have to run that by them. You know, they're geared up to, I would imagine they're going to be here real early in the morning, like they've done on other occasions.
Try and beat this.
Yeah, try to beat the crowd.
But of course, then everything we have from visitors is going to sit there for a whole week because it's not going to pick up till.
Well, that, you know, that depends on the Monday pickup. I'm not sure what area that is. Yeah, the businesses have multiple collection days, so yeah. Good question.
Thank you, Doug. Good luck to staff planning for this event. That's all unknown. Mike, okay, chief?
As Lieutenant Robinson mentioned, he and I traveled up to Logan County, Ohio. The Indian Lake area over the weekend on Saturday and Sunday as part of the Butler County Incident Management Team for the tornadoes that happened there on March 14th. That part of the, part of Ohio was heavily affected. It was the most affected area. Our role up there was to assist Logan County EMAs director with conducting damage assessments on individual residences. So that data then could funnel its way up to the state, so then they could do a disaster declaration. So approximately, I think, 10 of us from that team went up there to do those. And uh, we saw absolute devastation. We talked with residents who I would say are already very disadvantaged, who then now have nothing. So it was pretty heart-wrenching. So I hope we never do see that here. We've been fortunate that that's not happened, at least in my time here, to that extent. But I am reassured about the resources we have here in Butler County, maybe versus Logan County, because of the partnerships we've built in being a member of these type of teams that have experience in dealing with disasters. You know, we send them to Florida for hurricanes and get a lot of experience there. So, so thank you to council and city staff who support us in doing those missions. Cause I think that knowledge comes back to us here locally. And then as Councilor French mentioned, this Thursday could be a big lift for first responders. So just, I would ask the public to kind of have patience. Watch out for pedestrians who may not follow the traffic signals, may be inebriated. And just call us if you see anybody in need. If you think something might be, somebody's having trouble, please just call us so we can check on them. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Jeff, you have anything? Okay. Heidi. Heidi, do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Sam? Sam was so quiet in there, sitting in the middle, I might've missed him, that's okay.
Good evening. As you know, my department's.
Good evening. Um, as you know, my department, uh, provides support to five different boards and commissions and I'm always looking for folks to serve. We do have, we got a recent resignation from BZA. Uh, Roger Ames, uh, was not able to serve the last three months of his term. He's been serving for six years and still gonna be in town, not leaving, but, uh, just not able to, not able to serve. We do have someone that will be bringing to you the next meeting for BZA, but we have a couple others that, uh, will not be able to continue or are not planning to reapply on BZA. So we'll have a couple other openings. And then we're still looking for one on Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission in the architecture and construction field. So anyone wishing to serve, happy to talk to them. Okay?
Thank you very much. It's a very important board and I've served on it. It's very important. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris? Mike?
I would just say what I say every year, on Thursday, please make the best possible choices you can make. Nobody wants to start their spring break off in the hospital or in Butler County Jail.
Alex?
I would second that. Um, just make decent choices. Um, and then another plug for the space race, 5K and 10K. It is a run-walk. Uh, it will be on our lovely trails, which you may be thinking, but Alex, I could just go on those trails for free. To which I say, but will you get a medal and potentially be awarded that medal by Star Wars royalty? Um, so please check it out. Uh, it should be a ton of fun. And then just thank you in advance to our police and fire divisions, cause it is, we are asking a lot of them in less than 30 days between Green Beer Day and then the, I mean, Thursday, we all know what it is. Um, between Green Beer Day, uh, and then, you know, we get that small lull over spring break. And then right as soon as spring break is over, we could get really walloped by what is a, an incredible once-in-a-lifetime event to see, but is gonna be a really big tax on the town. So I think, you know, an extra smile, wave and a nod of support and just grace and patience over the next month would be massively appreciated. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Uh, just wanted to declare my ongoing support for ceasefire and aid to Gaza. It continues to eat at me and I wish we could do something about it.
Nothing for me.
Um, a couple of things for me. Um, I wanted to congratulate, uh, the city on, uh, being declared Tree City USA once again. And so our tree program has been recognized nationally and, uh, so good for, for them. There is a, um, on Arbor Day, there will be a ceremony at the park and I'll remind people of that as we get a little bit closer to it. Second is a early reminder to everyone of the Kiwanis Pancake Day, which is one of the biggest fundraising events of the year in this community where we support TOPPS and a lot of other important organizations and scholarships and help for kids and scouting and all kinds of really good things. And, uh, so look for a member of Kiwanis and they'll sell you tickets. Please buy the tickets.
Tickets for what day?
This is, and I'm gonna get to that. That is April 20th. It's at the high school from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Get there early, especially if you like specialty pancakes, which cost a little bit more. Otherwise, it's $6 per ticket. Um, it is $7 at the door, so you wanna get them ahead of time. And you can pay an extra two bucks and you can get chocolate chip or blueberry or one of those different amenities. I think they might have strawberry as well. I just get the regular pancakes. Anyway, I think it's probably the biggest congregation of people during the day. You get to see everybody there and it's something that you should mark on your calendar, so I hope you do. I appreciated your comment about Israel and Gaza. I think that's very important. It's nothing that we might be able to do anything dramatically ourselves about, but it's something we should all be concerned about. And, uh, I might also add that we should keep the people of Ukraine in our hearts and minds, especially those in our sister city of Dubno. And, um, so we, we think of them and, um, hope for the very best. And I hope that our Congress gets its head together over the things that they do and support, um, the defense of Ukraine. That's my personal opinion. Okay. Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.